I'd like to now call the order of the April 20th, 2023 meeting of Mayor and Council. I want to call on Councilman Tim Carroll to lead us in prayer, and then I'm going to call up the Trinity Presbyterian Church Scout BSU Boy Scout Troop 2020 and Troop 454 to lead us in the pledge. Thank you.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight, and we want to thank you for the continued blessings that you provide to each and every one of us in our great city. We ask that you be with us tonight, help us, guide us, make sure we're well-studied, well-veiled Austin. And we ask that you continue to be with everyone in the city, bless them, and stay with them, and keep them close to your heart. We pray for all this in your son's name, Jesus. Amen.
Amen. I'd like to come up to the front microphone. We'll start when you start.
Please join me in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to also acknowledge the troop leaders. Is Melissa Johnson with you?
No.
No? And I don't see Celine Gladwin either.
Good job.
Nice to meet you. Thank you all. We'll now move on to the awards and presentations. Consideration of the April 2023 Employee of the Month Award with Doug Stevenson and anybody he cares to join him. Come to the front, please, and meet Ben O'Dowd, our city engineer, and myself.
I don't know if I read to address y'all or read to address the crowd, but I'll go ahead and read my statement. I don't want to mess it up, so I'm just going to read it aloud. Within the engineering department, we currently have two construction inspectors on staff. Our construction inspectors are responsible for threshold and quality of work inspections for public and private construction projects within the city. They inspect utility installations, stormwater pipe installations, asphalt paving, curb and gutter, concrete sidewalk, general site grading, driveways, and franchise utility installations for conformance with the city's standard specifications, international building codes, and city land development regulations. Our inspectors are tasked with quickly developing and maintaining rapport with local and out-of-area contractors to facilitate local growth and development while still preserving and protecting the city's public interests. Construction inspectors must navigate complex and challenging interactions daily, let's put it lightly, while still dealing respectfully with their clientele. On December 14th, 2022, one of our construction inspectors was required to take an extensive leave of absence for personal reasons. During this time, Doug Stevenson took on significant additional duties and responsibilities. Ordinarily, at any given time, each of our inspectors is personally responsible for 10 projects within the city. Over the last several months, Doug has managed to monitor and be available to inspect 20-plus active public and private projects within the city. He's hustled so hard, literally, and has tactfully handled many emergent project scenarios. He's been a liaison in support of development, helped answer questions presented by contractors, coordinated between departments to assist property developers in advancing private projects, and so much more. Doug has gone above and beyond his duties, and we are very thankful that he's on the team. It's for these reasons that Doug Stevenson deserves recognition for the Employee of the Month.
And you don't want to make you mad.
Them two together.
You said so good we got you two certificates.
Oh, wow.
One frame for you to display at either your office or your home, another that you can display anywhere as well. But here's the most important of them. Here's the check. It's a gratitude for your job well done.
I appreciate it very much.
Thank you very much. And the plaque, your name will go on the plaque that'll be in City Hall, 100 City Hall as well. Unbelievable.
I appreciate it very much. It means a lot.
May I have your question?
I should do. 9th meeting. Council, you've had time to look those over. Any additions or deletions? Hearing none, it's approved by acclamation. We'll move on to the public hearing portion of the evening.
Sir, do we need to approve the March 23rd as well?
Thank you. So not just the March 9th, but the March 23rd. Any additions or deletions to either? Hearing none, both are approved by acclamation. Thank you, Tim. City Attorney probably would have thrown an elbow here in a second. On the public hearing item, the first one, consideration of an ordinance for a conditional use permit for a moving and storage service business in a highway commercial zoning district. Matt Martin, our planning director, will present.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. This is a request by Robert Glaner for the conditional use permit approval for a property consists of about 1 and 1/2 acres located at 434 Connel Road. It is for a moving and storage business in a CH zoning district. Subject property as own, you see it on the screen, is part of a much broader commercial corridor along Bemis Road. This is directly behind a lot of the commercial businesses that are automotive in nature that front Bemis Road. Character area is a little bit different neighborhood activity center. We covered that at the work session, given the history of this property. The CH zoning is an anomaly there. It's actually a noncompliant zoning district, but as owned, it is allowed any and all of the uses afforded to CH. Moving and storage is by conditional use, depending on the details, whether it be a large operation or a small operation. This one fortunately is one of the smaller ones. But as you see aerial imagery, this is the high-resolution imagery from 15 years ago. Not much has changed on the site. Subject property looks like this from Connel Road. It was formerly an automotive repair type business, has some service bays on the side, which the applicant will use as part of their warehousing space. And then the west side of the property looking toward the back. And then they have a small fleet of smaller, two-axle version of moving and storage trucks that they will park behind the facility. Adjacent properties include Morningside Baptist Church to the south. This is the westward view looking down Connel Road. The Ray Norton Automotive Facility directly to the east, another automotive facility directly to the west. And then in your packet, you have the survey, site plan. They're not proposing any changes to the site other than to accommodate a parking area for their trucks in the rear. The vacant portion to the north is still open and grass, might become another CH use someday. The applicant is still thinking about those details. Party Commission reviewed this at their meeting on March 27th, found it consistent with the comprehensive plan, the conditional use review criteria, which are there in your packet, and the recommended approval subject to four conditions, which are there on your packet. We went over those at the work session. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have. Counsel, any questions
for Matt?
I have one, Matt. At the work session, we discussed that those vehicles would not be parked on the grass, but just now you stated that they may be parked behind the building that's not concrete.
Well, there's a little bit of concrete back there, but it's a grass area that they will have to go through and make ready for truck parking. Right now, it's just open storage, but they haven't gone through plan review process yet for that. We're just waiting on use approval and business license approval.
And so, once they get that, then they'll come in and pour that pad in the back as they need to?
Yeah, they'll have to do a simple design schematic to show how that's going to work and pass muster with the city engineer.
Any other questions for Matt? Matt, thank you. Again, this is a public hearing item. Is there anybody that would like to come forward at this time and speak in favor of this request? Seeing none. Oh, here comes one. Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Robert Glaner, 503 Teresa Drive, Lake Park, Georgia. And they've done a wonderful job of getting all prep work done, so I'm hoping everything goes good. We have a successful business. My son does over in Tallahassee, and we're hoping to have just as successful business here as well. I've been working here for, I've been in the flooring business forever, as long as I can remember, since I was 12, so it's been a minute. But I'm hoping it gets a little bit easier on my body. So I hope everything works. You have any questions?
Counsel, any questions for Robert? Good luck.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to come forward and speak in favor of this request? Seeing none, is there anybody that would like to come forward and speak in opposition to this request? Again, seeing none, it's yours for action, counsel.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this as stated with the conditions.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, show of hands. Counsel, thank you. Congratulations. Item B, consideration of an ordinance to rezone 0.33 acres from residential professional to office professional, as requested by Anthony Tong. Property is located at 307 East Jane Street. Matt Martin again to present.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. This is 0.33 acres at 307 East Jane. As you see on the map on the screen, it's on the south side of the road, a little more than halfway back between Ashley and Williams Street. All of the surrounding properties are zoned RP. They are requesting OP zoning to make them eligible for a possible conditional use for a tattoo parlor, which, as we talked about at the work session, is not allowed in RP, but could be allowed in OP with a conditional use. Character area is transitional neighborhood. Aerial imagery, you see a lot of the urban forest. It's an older development pattern with buildings. Many of the houses, or some of the houses, converted to professional office use. Subject property was formerly the administrative offices for the Humane Society and a few other uses more recently that have operated there, but has been sitting empty for at least a number of months. Has parking lot in the front and the back. This is a zoom-in view of the front. The leaf mower has not been there recently. And then the rear parking lot, plenty of pavement, plenty of room for a dozen or possibly even two dozen parking spaces, the rear doors to the building. Adjacent properties, as you see, looking eastward down Jane toward North Ashley Street. Nearly to the west is one of those former houses converted to a law office. Across the street, there's some rental properties, including houses and duplexes. That's Iowa Drive intersection. And then eastward from there, another rental house, another house beyond that. To the east of the subject property is a duplex. And then beyond that, a professional office building, which I think has been there a good while. And then a building that some of us may recognize, this is the large two-story brick house that is on the corner of Jane and Ashley. In your package is the survey. They're not proposing any changes to the site, really just to move in and occupy the building, maybe some light work on the inside. The applicant explained that the inside of the building was really set up the way that they had wanted for his operation. So this one is a rezoning, unlike the first one, which was conditional use. Party Commission reviewed this at their meeting on the 27th of March. They're recommending approval of the rezoning to OP by a split vote of five to three. Be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Can you go back to the picture that shows the building itself?
On the wrong way. There's the zoom-in of the front. There's from the street.
So I see there's a lot of parking there. So the pad is there now, I mean...
It's all asphalt paving under that.
Right. But I also see grass areas well. I mean, is there a condition, is there a way to put in there that no more parking can be made there? I mean, how can we, what can we do to make sure that we don't write down, next thing you know, is pine trees are taken out, big old parking pads there, and 40 people can park there?
Sure. It becomes non-residential property, so there's tree permit removal requirements. The parking lot itself, once you add too much, then it triggers stormwater requirements. There is no stormwater pond on this property. It predates all of those, so they would run the risk of triggering that. Any changing of the pavement would have to go through for a plan review for site work. There has more than enough room to meet the minimum parking requirements for the use. And from that perspective, there really is no need for it. They also have an open space requirement in the zoning regs. That's a little more restrictive in OP than it is in commercial. So that's a percentage of the site that they would have to monitor and leave open. And I think in OP, it's 70% is the cap, so 30% open. One thing working against them in that regard is the back parking lot is almost all pavement under there. So what little open space they have, most of it is right here in the front yard. So based on the numbers, they might be able to add a little bit, but not much.
All right. So now with the street, as far as parking on the street, is that allowed in that area, or is it yellow?
And I'm seeing yellow curb here in the photo.
On the side, though, where the places that are where the building's at, I don't think there is.
I am not...
What my concern is, I want to make sure that if this does pass, that we're not lining it up, you know, like there's a football game going on, if that makes sense, you know, during the day, during the hours of operation, that kind of, I'm not trying to, you know, mess up business, but I just want to make sure that traffic is able to go through, you know, everything is nice and clear and clean.
Right. The only way that all-street parking would be allowed is that the city has designated this for all-street, and I don't know if we have. This is not a street that I travel there. It's actually our vehicle parked there, along in front of the property temporarily. And I see the yellow curbing on the one side. I would assume the other, but I don't know.
I use that street every day, coming from the mall to any area, Baytree, that's a shortcut going to my house. If a car's in front of that building, you have access to go around that car. It's like a one-way. Same thing during football season, when all that is packed in with baseball, football, you still can get in and out of there. That driveway or anything would not affect anyone going down that area, two and four, because it's one-way, one-way and another-way. Going east is one-way, going west is one-way in the opposite direction. So there's no way that driveway could affect anybody's parking or anything.
Well, I mean, it's like a one-way pair, but you see the yellow curbing against the median. The north side of the road, the yellow curbing is on the outside of the road. That would make me want to assume it's the same on the south side. So it's marked off for no parking. Football games, it might, yeah. Years ago, I remember the median being, can hold an amazing number of cars.
And for VSU home games, they come all the way up to that split in the median and shut the road down. It's actually...
And parked in that cup, roads paved.
They're actually, the entire road's closed off with barriers for VSU home games.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions for Matt? Matt, thank you. Again, this is a public hearing item. Is there anybody who would like to come forward and speak in favor of this request at this time? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Anthony Tong. How you doing, Councilman, Councilman and Mayor? I wanted to actually come here and give myself the opportunity to open up for any questions that you all might have. When I opened this business shortly after I graduated from VSU, it was a hybrid business where I actually served jewelry as well, and then we provided the services. Well, now we've had so much success that it's impossible for me to scale both businesses while keeping them in the same building. So as we started looking for a place to put the service-based aspect of the business, I wanted to be somewhere that was in close proximity to my initial business so I could monitor it, plus also stay relatively close to where a lot of our bases, which is the university. So this was an ideal location. And I didn't know until I tried to get the business license that it in fact had to be zoned properly. So that's why I'm here, to get a rezon. If you guys have any question, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Counsel, any questions for Mr. Tong?
Do you have to modify the building?
Oh, no, sir. Actually, with the backyard being asphalted already, it pretty much is able to accommodate the traffic that we would have. So...
The building itself?
No, I probably would have to put a small ramp for wheelchair accessibility. That would probably be in my conditional use, nine times out of 10. But outside of that, structurally, no, sir. And then the question, yes, sir.
One other question. Is your business appointment-based?
Yes, sir. So the only thing that we really have rockings on is piercings, and we might have, I would say generally, maybe five to 10 piercing customers, maybe on a heavy day. As far as with the tattoos, most of them are more senior artists, so it's all appointment-based. So I would imagine that I might have, at the most, 10 to 15 customers that come to my place of business during the day.
How long have you had this building renting?
I've had this building rented since November. So we were scheduling a soft-line opening in February, but then I got that notice when I went to get the business license that it was a matter of zoning. And I didn't understand why, because we don't really have retail products, it would have happened to be commercial. And then when I realized it wasn't a municipal matter, it was more a statewide code, then I tried to find an avenue in which I could utilize the building. And that's when Mr. Martin let me know about the possibility of maybe getting a conditional use as permit.
Tony, I was impressed that you went door-to-door as well.
Yes, sir.
To Acto and to some of the other businesses.
Absolutely. Yeah. So I did the preliminary. I went and spoke with every one of my neighbors, made sure that they would be okay with me moving my business there. And I was welcoming pretty much everyone. So, yes, sir.
Good. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor of this request? Is there anybody that would like to speak in opposition to this request? Please come forward. Seeing none, counsel, it's yours for action.
Well, I would like to make a motion that we approve the request of the applicant as stated.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further comments? All in favor? Passed unanimously. Congratulations, Tony. Move on to item C, consideration of an ordinance to grant planned development approval for a single-family attached residential development, as requested by Stoker Utilities. Matt Martin, our planning director, will again present.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. This is a revisit of a planned development approval that was on the agenda back in December for the subject property, which you see on the screen. This is at the northeast corner of Knights Academy Road and North Forest Extension. Property is currently vacant. It's all zoned, single-family, R6. The request back in December was for a non-conventional townhouse-style development, what we call single-family attached. That is still the request. What has changed is the site plan. There was enough change to the approved master plan that we needed to bring it back through the public hearing process. So everything else otherwise is the same. Character area, still suburban area. Aerial imagery shows it as a crop field. I think this was a U-Pic strawberry place, or at least for once upon a time. You see off to the east, a street with some houses that were built 10 to 13 years ago, part of the Branch Point group of subdivisions that are off to the north and east. Survey in your packet, subject property is tract one, which is that westerly portion along North Forest. Subject property is seen from the intersection of Branch Point and Fort North Forest, looking southeastward through the fields. Another southward view across the subject property. Adjacent property to the north is part of the same original farm, also planned to be an R6 subdivision someday. And then this is Green Hill Drive, which is that neighborhood off to the east. Only other thing different than that pattern is a rural residence that's to the south of the subject property on the other side of Knights Academy. The old master plan from back in December showing tract one, you see is a series of 42 attached dwelling units in buildings lined up along one row, or mostly one row with the back facing North Forest, the fronts of them facing the interior. The building design elements from back in December showed the difference in materials, but front-facing garages. And then the current proposal is to take that row of buildings, break it into sections, and pair up the different pieces of the building so that the front doors will face each other, and then the garages will face each other. Really easier to read on the colored rendered version that's there in your packet. Interesting part, like we talked about at the work session, it's the same number of dwelling units, but by rearranging the site plan, the applicant was able to gain some space and enough to put in the community center with a cabana and pool that's there at the north end of the property. Same-sized building, same parking, everything else, but a little more efficient design. And certainly in staffs, a better design than what was contemplated before. Building facades will change a little bit. I think it's a different builder in the end, the rear side, which is not as visible. And then we did a comparison where the original plan came from, which is from the development up in Lawrenceville. And I went online and found some pictures of what that looked like. Up there, it was a three-story version of what's being proposed. This one is two-story, a little bit different features on the architecture, but the same general massing of buildings and overall site design. The conditions of approval are mostly the same. Party Commission had recommended approval of these revised version of it at their hearing on the 27th. There are seven conditions in total. They are there in your packet. Be glad to answer any questions you may have. And I believe the applicant's representatives are here too to ask some, or answer additional questions that you may have for them.
Counsel, any questions for Matt? From Matt, excuse me.
You said seven conditions. On here, it says eight.
Correction, it is eight. When I looked at the party commission packet, we repeated number five.
Thank you.
They were numbered one through seven, but it was actually eight. Thank you.
Any other questions for Matt? Matt, thank you. Again, this is a public hearing item. Is there anybody that wants to come forward and speak in favor of this request? Please come forward, state your name and address.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Matthew Enman, 4560, Bow North Drive, where the advanced engineering, where the engineer for the project. As Matt mentioned, it's the same concept we came with y'all before, same number of departments. The biggest thing about this, we added parking. We added the leasing office, the amenities up front with the pool and all that stuff up front. So, and it also has interior courtyards to it, where before they kind of faced two forest streets, they kind of have interior courtyards. It's a lot better layout for somebody living there. It's just going to be a better look and just a better overall product. So with that, that's really the guts of it. It's just a better layout, we think, than the previous one we had.
I was very impressed that you added a quality of life aspect to it. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Now, what's your name again, sir?
I'm sorry?
What's your name again?
Matthew Enman.
Okay.
Any questions for Matthew? Matthew, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to come forward and speak in favor of this request? Seeing none, is there anybody that would like to come speak in opposition to this request? Again, seeing none, counsel, it's yours for action.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this along with the eight conditions.
Second. I'm sorry, second. I'm excited.
Motion and a second. Any further comments? All in favor, show of hands. Counsel, thank you. Matthew, thank you. Item D, consideration of an ordinance to rezone a total of 15.94 acres from single-family residential, R15, and residential professional, both, to all multifamily residential, as requested by Stoker Development. Matt Martin to present yet again.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. As you said, this is a split zone piece of property that totals about 15 or so acres. It is mostly all 15 zoning currently, a little bit of RP in the corner. That zoning pattern, as we talked about at the work session, originated from when the borough land, 2,000-plus acres was annexed into the city 34 years ago. That was based on a master plan at that time that set the zoning pattern. However, the subdivision pattern has evolved several times since then. So now we have a condition where property lines are a little bit different than zoning. In this case, the applicant is proposing to do a single-family subdivision of higher density, basically an R6 kind of subdivision that works fine in the RP area, but not in the R15. Character area, community activity center, allows the more intensive zoning districts, all the commercials, some of the high-density residential. The irony is that the R15 portion of that is noncompliant, except because it is not dense enough. And it's based on future plans that this would be a commercial mode around this interchange. So high-density residential, at least, is the order of the day for here. RP certainly fits in with that. They had originally proposed an R6 zoning to go with their subdivision layout. I encouraged them to release a request in RN, that if the property project were to change, then it leaves open the possibility of multifamily density to go here, which on the backside of a commercial development is actually a good idea. As you see in the area... As you see in the area, a lot of the lands through here are undeveloped. The major features to the south and west, which is the Val Osta High School, which is likely to be a very prominent feature there. So this corner area by the interchange is always going to be its isolated pocket and probably more intensive development. Boundary survey in your packet shows exactly where the zoning boundaries are with the property lines. Subject property looks like it has for a very long time along this stretch of Park Avenue. This is the view westward. And then the distance on the left is the back entrance to the new high school. And then this is looking toward the intersection with inner perimeter. Proposed layout has been put in your packet by the applicant just to demonstrate the number of lots it could fit under an R6 density. And like we talked about at the work session, single-family development in R6 or RM follow the exact same standards. So a layout here, there's been ongoing discussion about one entrance versus two. The way they have designed it is a way to accommodate either. If you look at the top of the screen where that other 90-degree turn is, that street can easily be extended out. And that may yet be the option they need to go with. If they don't, then it would be a variance process that's handled administratively through the city engineer. But this is the general layout in terms of number of lots, this is the magnitude that we're looking at.
Counsel, any questions for Matt?
I have one.
Sure.
If we approve this now, this doesn't have to come back before us with the, to address the entrance and exit.
Correct. That's handled in-house administratively as part of the subdivision review process. Unless we stipulate a condition, the default by code is to have two driveways unless they're given the weight not to. All things considered, I think we're looking at two driveways. What they had proposed here as food for thought was maybe have the one entrance be a boulevard style, which helps, but not quite the same thing. But we're looking at it. Res zoning approval, we're not approving a subdivision layout.
I understand it, but you said if we pass this now, it won't have to come back before us. And we're trying to avoid putting all that traffic on Park Avenue with three schools over there. That's what I'm trying to, that's what I'm trying to figure out, is there another way to happen?
Right. What we would be approving is RM zoning, whatever RM zoning would allow, which could include a subdivision like this or apartments. Right now, the RP zoning would allow apartments. The commercial zoning is still there, which would be a lot more intensive usage than what's being proposed.
Any option for a D cell lane?
That is part of the review process with subdivisions based or driven by the number of dwelling units. That's also being thought about. And part of the big factor of the thinking process is the future of that intersection to the northeast. That is very likely to be widened. We're looking at future projects for the widening of Park Avenue as well, and that obviously would affect entrances and exits.
Counsel, any further questions for Matt? Matt, thank you. Again, a public hearing item, so if there's anybody that would like to come forward and speak in favor of this request, please do so. State your name all over again.
Good evening again. Matthew Inman, Advanced Engineering, 4560 Val North. Couple of questions Matt brought up, that are questions about we are going to have two entrances to the subdivision. The one interest of subdivision was popular, looking to some future plans, some riding there at intersection with inner perimeter and Park Avenue. We're planning on putting two entrances in. We're not, we don't want to do the one boulevard, we'd rather have the two entrances. Part of that is because of what you brought up about D cell lanes. If you have a lot of traffic on one lane, you need a D cell lane. If you split between two, the need for D cell lane may be less, and by some rule they help with, we need to even staff and get there. But we are doing two entrances and it is intended to be a single-family subdivision. So that's a couple of things. A couple of neat things that this developer likes doing that we're doing, there is a midway in the middle of the block, that long continuous block in the middle, there is a 20-foot ride in there, it's kind of mid-blocks, you can walk between the two blocks. It's been encouraged pedestrian walking around the property. You don't have to walk the entire outside loop to get to someone's house. If you live on one street and next to my street, you could walk through the middle of subdivision versus having to walk the entire perimeter. They've got a nice play area up front. Likely to put a mail kiosk up front, just is convenient for everybody, and we got parking spots there anyway. That's our intended place for the kiosk. Water service over here, adjacent to us, same office as the high school, so everything should be sized adequately to serve it. So I think everything's, on this one's pretty clean. We have one other thing, Matt mentioned the potential down the road that Park Avenue at some point is going to be widened, we believe. We've got the 10-foot shown for that additional right away on one side and the, I guess, the eastern side. We are going to include on the western side too, on the western lot, the first lot on the wagon side, just so that down the road when that happens, it'll be a little bit of play area, but we'll have to go back and do right-of-way acquisitions, that kind of stuff down the road, just kind of anticipating that Park Avenue getting widened at some point down the road.
Smart. I think you just bumped that project way up the list.
We're trying to avoid any problems if we can ever help it, so.
Counsel, any questions for Matthew on this project?
Yeah. Where else are y'all looking out there to do one of these?
They've looked at one. I do not say, I'm not the realtor, I don't want to get away, if I say something, it's going to probably make you up or down, I don't want to do that.
Just this east side of the city and especially all this old Berlin property is just ready for development and.
It's been a long time. It's been, it's been very developed piece for a long time. There's some, some tracks have more dwellings and all on them, but it's a very nice piece. With the high school out there, it's a great place to build a subdivision, it'd be a great place to live.
Stay on that side, stay on that side.
Yes, ma'am.
But you leave from over there, and don't tell her my secret.
Do you know how soon you're going to break ground?
They would, if we get plans ready tomorrow, they'd be, they'd be coming us behind it, they're ready to go.
Any other questions for Matthew? Matthew, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to come forward and speak in favor of this request at this time? Seeing none, is there anybody that would like to come speak in opposition to this request? That doesn't belong to one of the four schools on that corridor? Counsel, it's yours for action.
Mr. Mayor, sir, I make a motion that we approve this request as stated by Mr. Matthew Inman.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further comment? All in favor, show of hands. Matthew, good luck. Thank you, Counsel. Move on to item five, ordinances and resolutions. Consideration of a resolution of support for the filing of a grant application to the Georgia Department of Community Affairs Historic Preservation Division for the South Side Historic Resource Survey, and again, phase three of that survey. Matt Martin.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor. This is not a zone case, but something very different. And like I described at the work session, this is the third song of, or third verse of the same song. Phase one and phase two grant we have received and completed, that was for the historic resources inventory or resurvey of our existing local historic district. Very large district, we broke it into two halves, that was phase one and two. That was a requirement under the city's CLG status to update that inventory every 10 years. Prior to 10 years ago, we had added some national historic registered districts, one of which straddles the local district as well as outside, one of them is completely outside of the local district. Those were of course inventoried at that time, they have not been inventoried since. Phase three is to look at the south side area, which has the south side National Register Historic District, which is completely outside the local district. So we're looking at that area and the areas around it. Pretty large area, but eligible for the same funding source through the state, which uses federal pass-through money for inventories of historic resources. It's over 1,000 parcels, and it would follow the same process and guidelines. We've submitted the application. What is before you is a permission for a letter, or excuse me, resolution of support from the city and a committal to have matching funds for the grant if we are awarded the grant. We won't know the outcome of that until late June, and if awarded, we would begin the process in the fall, and it would carry over into the following fiscal year, just like it has before on the first two phases. Be glad to try and answer any questions you might have for that.
Counsel, any questions for Matt? Matt, thank you. This is not a public hearing item, so counsel it's yours for action.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve this, as presented.
Second. Got a motion and a second, any further comments? All in favor, show of hands. Counsel, thank you. Matt, thank you. Move on to five B, consideration of a request from the Val Osta Lounds County Airport Authority to approve a resolution authorizing acceptance of a contract with GDOT to proceed with a pavement rejuvenation, crack seal, and overall smoothing out of our airport authority and our runways. Richard Hardy will present.
Thanks, Mayor. As the mayor stated, the airport authority desired to proceed with the pavement refurbishment of the, by doing a crack seal and completely remarking the taxiway at the regional airport. GDOT prepared the contract to cover 75% of the cost in the amount of $278,078.68. The Val Osta Lounds County Airport Authority committed to funding the project on February 14, 2023. As you know, the city administers all grants on behalf of the airport authority. Local funds needed for the required match will come from the authority. As a, a resolution has been prepared authorizing the mayor to accept the contract in order to process this document. Staff recommends counsel approve the resolution authorizing the mayor to accept the contract in order to proceed. Prepare to answer any questions.
Any questions for Richard? Richard, thank you, Counsel, it's yours for action.
May I make a motion to authorize you to be able to set the contract in order to process the document?
Second. Motion and a second, any further comments? All in favor, show of hands. Counsel, thank you. Move on to item six, bids, contracts, agreements and expenditures. Consideration of a request to purchase and renew a 10-year Tims connectivity and support plan. Ben O'Dowd, our city engineer, to present.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. This one's pretty straightforward. This is a request to renew the data plan essentially for our Tims units and our traffic cabinets. We had some, this is a utilization of an approved budget line item, I wanted to bring it before you all for final approval before we pull the trigger. The original approved budget amount was $386,358. The cost of what I'm bringing before you today is $378,135.56, which is a captured savings of $8,222.44. An added benefit is we, due to, again, additional savings from buying these data plans in bulk and buying the long-term duration data plans, we were able to capture some discounts from the provider, and we were also able to fund the data plan for the 10 transponder units that are in our emergency response fire vehicles right now. So that's an added benefit as well. Staff's recommending approval, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Counsel, any questions for Ben? Done, Ben, thank you. Counsel, it's yours for action.
I make a motion that we approve this request as stated.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further comments? All in favor, show of hands. Counsel, thank you. Ben, thank you. Move on to item B in that category, consideration of a request to purchase real estate for a new City of Val Osta Fire Station facility. Matt Martin will again present this exciting item.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor. This has been a long time in the process coming through lots of negotiation, but we're ready to make the real estate purchase. This is for a little more than seven acres of land located at 4434 North Forest Street Extension, currently occupied by the First Church of the Nazarene for Val Osta, who is looking to relocate to smaller quarters elsewhere. As we talked about at the work session and described in your packet, we have a growing need for a new fire station facility in this part of the community. That would be the primary use of this facility. Purchase price of $1,525,000 with a one-year lease back to the church. It's really is a win-win for us and them. We need that one-year period or more to finalize our plans for renovation and use of the property. They need a little bit of time to finish their process of finding a new home. So it works well, a lot of pieces and parts have come together for this, but it is certainly time to secure the real estate so that we can continue our planning process of what we need to do to make the facility the way it needs to be for our use.
Any questions for Matt on this one? Counsel, Matt, thank you. Counsel, it's yours for action.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this for the purchase of this land, 1.525.
Second.
With the, with the lease back.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further comments? All in favor, show of hands. Counsel, thank you. Matt, thank you again. Item C, consideration of a request for a conditional lien release and forbearance agreement for property located at 18 East Brookwood Place. Richard Hardy, our interim city manager, to present.
Yes, the city brought nuisance enforcement actions against 818 East Brookwood Place. As a result, the city demolished, demolished the derelict structure on the property. Additionally, the lot was cleaned and mowed several times, thus increasing the, the price of the lien. The lot cleaning came out to $171, and the demolition was $5,395. The combined amount for the lien is $5,737. There is an interested buyer that is stated to prepare to buy the lot and construct a residential home. However, to do so, they're requesting the city to forgive the liens. And as you're aware, public returities are legal unless allowed by law. The state statute that allows governmental entities to abate nuisance properties authorize the city to waive the release on the liens upon entering into a contract with the owner of the property. Parties must agree to a timeline for restoration of the property, provided that the said owner can demonstrate the financial means to accomplish such rehabilitation. To accomplish this goal, the purchaser has agreed to enter into a conditional lien release and forbearance agreement. Essentially, the city will temporarily withhold the enforcement of the liens upon the following condition. The interested buyer purchased the property and remained the owner throughout the term, construct a single-family residence in accordance with applicable zoning, secure a certificate of occupancy within one year, and pay for all improvements. Once the purchaser satisfies these conditions, the city will release or mark the lien satisfied.
Standing by for any questions. Counsel, any questions for Mr. Hardy?
Could we state that this person has been keeping their property clean for how long? As a, as a, as a plus for the city, right?
Right. I mean, that's, you know, based off of, these are only required items that's outlined.
I think based on my conversations with the interested purchaser, yes, he has mowed it several times and kept it clean.
And we get a brand-new house there. Be nice. All right, Counsel, it's yours for action.
Mr. Mayor, I make a request that we approve this request presented by Mr. Hardy.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further comments? All in favor, show of hands. Counsel, well done, thank you. Richard, thank you. Move on to the citizens-to-be-heard portion of the night, portion of the meeting that we asked you to come forward and state your name and address so we may have it for the record. Our policy requires you stay under three minutes so that others have time to be heard. Again, please direct all comments to Counsel as a whole. Do not attempt to engage individual members of Counsel in debate. It's our policy to then follow through with you almost immediately after that meeting. Additionally, we asked that if you are part of a group, that you designate a spokesperson again to ensure that others have time to be heard. With all that being said, is there any citizens to be heard tonight? Please come forward. Again, please state your name and address.
My name is Steve Freeman, I stay at 612 Second Avenue. I just want to tell my councilmen thank you for responding to a little problem I had. And I have another issue about a lot. And it's 808 First Avenue. The city owns that lot, and I've been mowing it and keeping it clean, and they were supposed to get back in touch with me to let me know whether they want to settle or not. Just been going on now for about three months now, I'd say. And also, I have another issue. The alley that's on First Avenue, it needs to be cleaned out. Now, I'm looking at one of the guys here to assist me on how to close that alley off. But he wants me to be able to get in touch with the landowners of the properties, where the alley runs through the property line, and that alley there is a mess. the alley runs through the property line, and that alley there is a mess. And I was just trying to figure out at the end, if they give it to us, should the city clean it out first before they give it to the owners or what? Because it's been a mess since I've been there. And one of the owners is here with me today. She's in the back. She own one of the properties that's on the corner there. Now, between First Avenue, West Street, it's an alley running along that side there. It's full of trash and it need to be cleaned out. I mean, if they're going to give it to the citizens, I think they should clean it out first before they give it to us.
Steve, hang around after the meeting, please.
And I want to tell Mr. Thomas, again, thanks for showing up because he's right on point. I appreciate you.
Thank you, Steve. Are there any other citizens wishing to be heard at this time? Please come forward.
Exactly, in time, once again, 16 University Place. And this is in regards to the conditional uses permit. So, as we spoke about earlier briefly, I have been in this lease since around November at the tune of about $1,350 a month. Now, although I have been fortunate enough to have a successful business, I'm not that successful where that type of money does not provide a strain on my business. So, correct me if I'm wrong, but to my knowledge, there are still two sessions that still has to take place in which the requirements of the conditional uses permits are designated, and then it has to come in front of you, fine, counsel, again. So, to me, it seems like there is a lot of extra steps that are there, and for a small business like myself who is trying to thrive inside of Valdosta, that's another $2,600 worth of expenses that I have to kick out. So, even if nothing can be done for me in this particular situation, I think that it would be nice that in the case that, at the initial zoning meeting, it's already understood that there would be a need for a conditional uses permit, which in my case, it was already understood that there would be a need for a conditional uses permit, that in the case that they do vote in the favor of approval, that they go ahead and come up with the requirements of the conditional uses permit. So, that way, when it gets to you guys, it's already ready to be done.
Thank you, council. Thank you. Are there any other citizens wishing to be heard at this time? Well, now, close out that portion of the evening and move on to the city manager's report. Richard Hardy?
Yes, mayor. I just want to thank all of the city employees that had any part in the Bluesberry Festival last weekend. I'm not going to steal your thunder, I know you have some words, but I really appreciate all the hard work that they, that employees took to make it happen, to make it a success. A lot of events going on throughout the city. The Georgia Cities Week begins on April the 23rd through April the 29th. Tuesday, April the 25th, Neighborhood Development Tour and Launch Tour will include a complete, completed tour of new projects from the CBD, CDBG program. On Wednesday, April 26th, Coffee with the Chiefs at Good Coffee in downtown, 7:30 to 9:00 a.m. On Thursday, April the 27th, Painting in the Park hosted by Neighborhood Development. This is a free event, will require registration. This will take place at Unity Park Amphitheater, 5:30 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Friday, April the 28th, we will close out Georgia Cities Week with Downtown Valdosta Main Street Annual Pub Crawl. This event begins at 5:00 p.m. at the Georgia Beer Company at 5:00 p.m. This Saturday, Earth Day Road Cleanup, April the 22nd, from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. Location will be from the end of Baytree Road to Ellis Drive, all the way to Spring Hill Place up to Spring Hill Drive. The last item will be our Brown Bag Concert Series will be May the 1st to the 5th at the Unity Park Amphitheater from 11:30 to 1:30 p.m. This year's lineup of bands is as follows. On the first, The Page Brothers. The second, Chemistry. The third, Gene Anders and Friends. Fourth, Main Street. Fifth, 41 Sound Band. That's all I have.
That's a lot.
Did we get a friend out of all of that? We can't remember all of that.
We can't keep. I'll make sure you get a friend out.
Okay, thank you.
Richard, thank you. We'll move on to our council comments, and I got a list just about as long. We did a joint proclamation with the county this morning for that Breaking Barriers Resource Fair at Mathis Auditorium. It went fantastic, very well attended. The same group is in Unity Park this evening. You've been able to hear their music throughout the course of the council meeting there. It's open to the public. They'd love to have you over. It's a second chance event, and that, again, Resource Fair, this is the follow-up and kind of celebration for that event this morning. Veka, Valdosta Early College Academy held a fantastic mock trial over at Judge Baker's Counsel's Chambers today, and it just was incredible. Those young people are so sharp and did so well, and I think every one of them are freshmen, ninth graders. That is, that's an amazing group, and it went very well. A big day, May 1st, out at our airport, the CRJ 900. A much larger jet will make its debut out there. They, we're going from about 55-seaters to 75-seaters in that jet, so if anybody wants to see how much bigger jet come in, and on a regular basis, that'll be May 1st out there. And yes, I did have a lot to say about Bluesberry Festival as well. I was just absolutely blown away by the way it all came together. And again, what was the stated goal when we started this is to unify our city, to have everybody there on a night together, feeling like friends and neighbors, and we pulled it off. Everybody made money. It was a very successful first-year event that we look to grow and make an annual event. I'm very proud of the council, I'm very proud of Brandy and Dave DeSalvo, very proud of Catherine and her crew as well, Shara, and everybody that helped promote it. It was just an amazing, amazing event for Valdosta this past Friday and Saturday as well. VSU has their spring game coming up this Friday. They've had three weeks worth of practice that the NCAA allows, and now they're going to go hard at it. The black and red game will be this Friday, 6 o'clock at Bazemore Hyder Stadium. Please come out and see a team about 100-plus on that roster out there. Viking baseball, they begin the state championship playoff run out at Noel George Field. They start tomorrow. The Wildcats begin the first round of state playoffs, but they have to go all the way up to Carrollton to play up there. And then again, please come out to the Unity Park Second Chance Event tonight, and thank you, counsel. That's all I got.
I got one.
Please.
Chief Botwell, I want to say thank you to your staff during the Blueberry Festival. A little kid got in the ant bed, and his staff came to rescue, put alcohol on the little girl's leg, and so we didn't know whether she get an infection or not, but Chief Botwell and his staff came and took care of this kid. We had another little kid that get missing. Chief Botwell and his staff did, took care of that little kid until the mother was found. For that, I want to say thank you, Chief Botwell, and to Chief Bellinham, because, Chief Leslie, that you all worked so good together during Blueberry Festival of taking care of our kids and the safety that was at Blueberry. The officers in the fire department, they were stationed in every area, and every parent felt very well, that the kids were well protected. And I want to say thank you all for what you did for our kids.
Well done. Counsel, any further comments?
I have a suggestion.
Please.
Some of our citizens are not tech savvy, so I know where they see, click, fix, but do you think we can open up a phone line where they can leave messages? You know, like, he was thinking about that alley, and they still leave a, where they can just leave a message where we, our staff can check it and get on some of this stuff?
Yes. We can do that. Thank you. Any other comments? Counsel, I'll.
Make a motion.
Remove the, exit the regular meeting and enter into executive.